Hi, everybody. We'll call the meeting in City Council, lower to state that the notice for this meeting was due to be posted. There is the former council here, everyone's here. You'll stand our chief. She's glad watching us on leave and her pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a lot of recognitions to do tonight, so we'll get started. If I can get this to stand up. His first proclamation says that whereas Thurgood Marshall High School has proven itself to be an exceptional school dedicated to recognizing the strengths and achievements of its student athletes, and whereas the 2014-15 Thurgood Marshall High School Track and Field Team devoted much time and energy to practicing the fundamental skills of the field and displayed disciplined teamwork against their opponents. Their highly successful year is a tribute to their exceptional talent and to the consistent preparation they endured in the face of competition to meet all the challenges. And whereas exhibiting perseverance, enthusiasm, and respect for the highest ideals of American sportsmanship, these stalwart warriors brought honor to their school and community. They've also earned the respect of citizens throughout the state of Texas following this remarkable season. And whereas the city of Missouri City is proud to recognize the accomplishments of the Thurgood Marshall High School coaches Lloyd Banks, Rodney Alex, Toya Franny, Louis Espinoza, and Troy Austin, and the student athletes Shamon Mameua, man, these guys, these names are gonna kill me, John Esam, Cedarine Lynch, Marcus Jones, thank you Marcus for having that common name for me. Amir Latton, Kendall Sheffield, thank you too, Larry Tremble, Jeremy Smith, and Gerald Mills for winning the 2015 UIL Boy State Track and Field Meet championship. On top of that, they set the record for the most points received in the history of the state track meet with that by ninety points. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, Mayor, on behalf of the City Council and all the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim June 1st today as Thurgood Marshall High School Track and Field Team Day, and the city of Missouri City, Fort Bend County hereby commend the members of the Track and Field Team for their hard work, team effort, and excellent performance. So guys, come on up. Coaches, come on up. Coaches, come on up. Give it all this. All right, Marcus. Where's Marcus? All right, Marcus. Bean. Right there over here. Shamon?
Shamon.
Shamon. Man, that's Shamon dressed up for the meeting. Whoa, love it. Amir? All right, Amir. Cedaron. That's Cedaron, right? All right, I get it right. Second go around. Gerald. Dan. John. Look at here. Look at John.
Esteban.
Kendall. Kendall's not here. Jeremy. All right, Jeremy. And Larry.
I want you to try to open it up.
Has that got everybody? All right, let's back up guys.
She wants you to try to open it up.
Come on in.
Alan.
The principal here. That's the principal even down. That's the principal on the other end. Read that.
Principal church.
Get up like you like each other now. Get up. Hold it up. Hold it up so we can see it.
We're challenging for a race.
Y'all been know the dime was a four forty relay, didn't you?
To the table.
All right, everybody, look this way. All right. One, two, three. Can we give one guys? Here's one. And six.
Are you getting us on the side over here?
They're not interested in you. They get cut off right here at the principal.
Keep the smile going.
Keep it going, guys. We'll see it in the morning, guys. Coach, you want to say something? Come on. Get out of here, coach.
All right, real quick. On behalf of Thurgood Marshall High School, I'd like to thank you guys for recognizing us, for all the hard work we've put in this year, working with a great group of young men and coaches, and we will continue to, we will continue to, let me rethought, Jesus, we continue to represent the community best we can. Thank you again.
Good job, guys. Thank you. Tell me hello, department.
Is that right? Oh.
I'm not taking a selfie, I'm taking a picture of that.
I'm not trying to take a picture of the TV.
And before the gentlemen take their seats, we did want to recognize Principal Gaston for her wonderful work as principal of Thurgood Marshall and leading these men, and I see Mrs. Vivian Burley, who serves as the mother for Thurgood Marshall. And last but not least, let us thank you all, the parents. The parents, because you're not just raising champions on the field, you're raising champions off the field as well. So please give yourselves a round of applause for what you're doing. And to the athletes, congratulations. Let your skills that you learned on the field set records and break goals off the field as well. So congratulations to you, gentlemen.
Next year, coach.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rachel Harper.
Pressure's on my side.
Hi, welcome, everyone. Tonight, we're going to take a moment to honor some rising young students that will become champions and have already been champions in the field of artwork for National Public Works Week. These young individuals had a challenge in front of them, they did a great job, and we're going to recognize them tonight. Tonight, I have with me a couple of the folks from Public Works, Claude Marshall and Robert Upton. These two men took this project in hand and went to the schools and talked to the children, told them all about Public Works, and presented their challenge. So here they are tonight to present the awards and recognize the students.
First, if I could have Lander and Lane, the kids from Lander and Lane that came tonight, second grade, Ms. Fraser's class, anyone here?
Come on up.
Yeah, come on up, kids. Bring your parents with you if you'd like.
Bring your parents, come on.
I was a bad child, I believe. Was I finished high school when I was sixteen? I got my bachelor's when I was twenty.
And I had the bachelor's before I turned twenty-five.
Okay. In first place, we had James McQueen.
J.D.
J.D. Oh, okay. And Miss Shallow, his mother, is here with him. And also, in second place, we had Lawrence S., and then Frederick Sampson was third, and his, Ms. Sampson and Mr. Sampson are here as well. So let me get these certificates out here.
Mr. Queen, where are you? There you are. Great job.
I'd like to thank you, kids, again, for participating, and we also got third in the, in our region as well, for all their artwork. So we did, yeah.
Good job, guys.
Thank you for making us look good.
Then next, we had E.A. Jones participated, Ms. Ball's class. And I think all three of the young ladies that placed are here.
Oh, there's the, Chris here, the ladies.
Yeah, we had ladies, three ladies in the fifth grade, and we had all boys in the second grade, so. Okay. Girls want to hold your posters?
You had first.
Obar.
It's Obar.
Vanessa.
Was it yours? Yours for first place?
Second place went to.
Samias Cindy Khan, and then Brianna Lewis was third place. And let me hand out your certificates.
See, first place.
I couldn't make good stick figures.
Second place.
And then third.
Come on, give a picture.
Come on, bear.
Very good. Thank you.
Before the evening, I'd ask to take a picture with the art students, we got a sensitive side. We know culture.
Grab a microphone. Yeah, one of the things that I think that the citizens should be most proud of is the ability that our finance department has to get, continue to get awards every year from the Government Finance Officers Association of the US and Canada for outstanding work they do on preparing the budget, as well as all the other financials that the citizens are needing to be paying attention to. So again, this year, the Government Finance Officers Association gives the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award to the city of Missouri City for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014. So again, the certificate of recognition is presented by the Government Finance Officers Association to those individuals who have been instrumental in their government unit achieving a distinguished budget presentation award, and the distinguished budget presentation award, which is the highest award in any governmental budgeting, is presented to those governmental units whose budgets are judged to adhere to program standards. So Michael Higgins.
What year?
June.
Fourteen.
Present that to you.
He didn't say that.
And we also have a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which is presented to the city of Missouri City for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year into June 30th, 2014. So, and again, this award is presented to the government finance officers, by the government finance officers, to the individuals designated as instrumental in their government unit achieving a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, and that certificate of recognition is for those annual financial reports and are judged to be those programs that adhere to standards and represents the highest award in any government financial reporting. So, good job, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few words about the awards. The, for the budget award, it's, the distinguished budget presentation has been awarded to the city of Missouri City by the GFOA of the United States and Canada for annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014. In order to receive this award, a government must publish a budget document that meets program criteria, as a policy document, as an operations guide, and as a financial plan, and as a communicative device. According to the GFOA, this was the city of Missouri City's 27th consecutive time of receiving this award. There are 126 agencies in the state of Texas who received this award for budgets beginning in 2013, and a total of 1,224 agencies nationwide. Of the 126 agencies in Texas, 85 were cities, 19 were school districts, and nine were counties. Just want to mention also, in the Houston metro area, there are 11 cities to receive this award, with Missouri City and two other cities receiving the award for the same amount of time. So there's not, we're leading the metro area in receiving the budget award. For the CAFR, it's the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, has been awarded to the city of Missouri City by the GFOA for its annual CAFR. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The CAFR has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFR. A few more facts. According to the GFOA, this was Missouri City's 32nd consecutive time receiving this award. There are 407 agencies in the state of Texas who received this award in calendar year 2014, and a total of 4,110 agencies nationwide. Of the 407 agencies in Texas, 193 were cities, 74 were school districts, and 51 were counties. In the Houston metro area, 21 cities received the award, with only four cities receiving the award more consecutively than Missouri City. The finance department could not have accomplished these awards without the help of many dedicated staff in the finance department, assistance from all city departments and leadership team, the support of our elected officials, our auditors, and I also must mention the hard work put in by two key former employees, Kathy Gernt, who was our former accounting manager, and Wes Vella, who was her previous finance director.
And you know, I think what it's, nothing else, it shows that this is financial transparency at its best. For those people that don't think we're transparent in what we do, that budget's on the, is on our website, and this award says that we are transparent in what we do, and that's great. So congratulations to Michael and his entire team. Back in, I guess, latter part of May, I received an email from a police officer in Sugar Land. Not that I got a ticket. Not that he was trying to, you know, say something about his mayor, who's a good friend of mine, but Officer Troy, is it Karchala?
Yes, sir.
He was a traffic officer in Sugar Land, and on May 21st, 2015, these two individuals that I'm going to call up here in a minute and Sharon, get them coming up here, they assisted a stranded motorist in Sugar Land. And Elo and Jason found a female motorist stopped on 98 under US 59. The motorist had run out of gas and didn't put her flashers on and was standing outside of her vehicle. Elo and Jason saw this and immediately activated their own warning lights on their public works truck. Minutes later, a young man driving on US 98, approaching the public works truck, narrowly missed striking the truck. At the last second, this vehicle braked and swerved right, missing the public works truck, but less than a foot, by less than a foot. He struck the right wall and then the left wall, he missed the stranded motorist, and it was in his opinion, this officer's opinion, that had, our employees had not rendered assistance to this young lady, the second car would have struck her vehicle and either seriously injured her or even killed her. So Officer Karchala is here tonight, and Sharon, come on up, these are two of your great employees. And this is just a certificate of recognition to Elo Allen S. III on his swift action to help preserve the safety of our Fort Bend County community and rendering assistance on May 21st, 2015 to a stranded motorist in Sugar Land. And the other one is to Jason Abila for the same thing, his swift action to help preserve the safety of our Fort Bend County community and rendering assistance on May 21st, 2015 to a stranded motorist in Sugar Land. And the other one is to Jason Abila for the same thing, his swift action to help preserve the safety of our Fort Bend County community and rendering assistance on May 21st to a stranded motorist. I don't think the lady is here that, that you saved her life, but on behalf of her and the rest of us, thank you all. So Officer, you may want to. Yeah. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. Good job, guys. Officer, thank you. All right. One more. Derek's here too, but Derek and Don, come on down here. Now, read this as they're coming up here. Whereas during the fall of 2002. That's a long time. Huh? Didn't seem like it's that long since Don, and I talked about this, but anyway, he organized residents and committed business and civic leaders in Missouri City who wanted to bring an event of purpose and substance to their community, and as a result of the collaboration, the Missouri City Juneteenth Celebration Foundation was founded. And whereas the vision of the Missouri City Juneteenth Celebration Foundation is to enhance the well-being of communities in Fort Bend County, particularly Missouri City, by creating additional opportunities for students, by possibly portraying the African-American lifestyle, developing programs designed to identify, nurture, and showcase talented, deserving students, and to bring together persons from all walks of life to share the benefits of good family living. And whereas the Missouri City Juneteenth Celebration Foundation, along with its many grateful organizations and citizens throughout Fort Bend County, thanked Mayor Pro Tem Don Smith for his dedication and his tireless efforts in making the celebration of Juneteenth a joyous event in the city of Missouri City. A week-long event, by the way. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim to all citizens that June 14th through the 20th, 2015 is Juneteenth week in the city of Missouri City, and urge all of our citizens of Fort Bend and Harris County to join in all the Juneteenth celebrations, so.
Mr. Mayor, on behalf of Mayor Pro Tem Don Smith, our entire executive board, we want to thank you, the city of Missouri City, and all of the city council members for supporting us from inception, and that goes a long way towards us being where we are today. So we want to thank you. For those of you, I want to ask you to indulge me a few seconds here, because I want to provide a little backstory on Juneteenth, for those that may not know. Juneteenth is the oldest-known celebration in the state of Texas. It signifies the Emancipation Proclamation as it relates to the state of Texas in 1865. This year marks the 150th anniversary of Juneteenth, which was June 19th, when Gordon Granger, Major, General Gordon Granger landed on the island of Galveston and started to make his way through the state of Texas to announce and to set forth the Emancipation Proclamation that was signed by our president in January of 1862, in effect for January 1st, 1863, thusly, 1865, when he landed in Texas to enforce that proclamation. So we in the Missouri City Juneteenth, again, as mayor, dedicated the existence and what we do toward providing cultural relevance every year within this community. We've been very fortunate in which to do this, and we thank them and you, the people of the community, for supporting us each and every year in doing so. So with that having said, want to announce an exciting, week-long activity calendar for the Missouri City 2015 Celebration. We, for many of those that see our events posted, we have a VIP reception that we set forth on Thursday, June 11th, and that's at the Freedom Tree. Again, a little backstory on the Freedom Tree, that was one of the alleged positions where Colonel Granger read or reinforced the reading of the Emancipation Proclamation, and we initially started many of our executed events and activities over, at the Freedom Tree, which is inside of Lake Olympia on Freedom Tree Drive, or more commonly, Misty Hollow, which is the better accessible lane over there. It's a beautiful reception that we'll have underneath that tree on Thursday, and you know, again, we love the support that we get, so you know, we invite many people to come out and share in that. We will follow that up on Monday, which is June 15th, where we have a fundraising golf tournament. And I say fundraising for a reason. One of the core ingredients, one of the principal vision and mission statements of this foundation is that we provide financial support to the needy students in the Fort Bend County, more importantly, within the city of Missouri City, that they continue with education, because we know in today's world, you can't advance without being educated, and we want to provide those that may be a little less fortunate or challenged, that opportunity to continue on with their education, and we've been very fortunate to, I would say, over the last 10 years, award over $100,000 in scholarships, and we do that through the golf tournament, our gala, things that we ask, you know, you to support us with paying some funds, because most of what we do is absolutely free, and it's open to the general public, so we encourage that, but we also ask for your support. So the golf tournament on Monday, Quell Valley Country Club, will start at 7:00 AM with the registration, and an 8:00 AM shotgun start. So again, come out and support. If you can't get off work, tell a friend that might be home on vacation to come out and support us, because we really do need that. The kids in the Fort Bend County, more importantly, Missouri City, need that, so we need your support there. We've transitioned to Thursday of that week, which is Thursday, the 18th of June, where again, I don't think the lady is here that you saved her life, but on behalf of her and the rest of us, thank you all. So Officer, you may want to--[154.31][154.31](applause) Yeah.
One, two, three, one, two, three. Thank you.
Good job, guys. Officer, thank you.[166.12][166.12](applause) All right, one more. Now, read this as they're coming up here. Whereas during the fall of 2002--
Yes, sir.
A long time.
A long time.
Huh?
Yes, sir.
Didn't seem like it's that long since Don and I talked about this, but anyway, "He organized residents and committed business and civic leaders in Missouri City who wanted to bring an event of purpose and substance to their community. And as a result of the collaboration, the Missouri City Juneteenth Celebration Foundation was founded." And whereas the vision of the Missouri City Juneteenth Celebration Foundation is to enhance the well-being of communities in Fort Bend County, particularly Missouri City, by creating additional opportunities for students, by possibly portraying the African-American lifestyle, developing programs designed to identify, nurture, and showcase talented, deserving students, and to bring together persons from all walks of life to share the benefits of good family living. And whereas the Missouri City Juneteenth Celebration Foundation, along with its many grateful organizations and citizens throughout Fort Bend County, thanked Mayor Pro Tem Don Smith for his dedication and his tireless efforts in making the celebration of Juneteenth a joyous event in the city of Missouri City. A week-long event, by the way. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim to all citizens that June 14th through the 20th, 2015 is Juneteenth week in the city of Missouri City and urge all of our citizens of Fort Bend and Harris County to join in all the Juneteenth celebrations, so.[320.12][320.12](applause)
Mr. Mayor, on behalf of Mayor Pro Tem Don Smith, our entire executive board, we want to thank you, the city of Missouri City, and all of the city council members for supporting us from inception and that goes a long way towards us being where we are today. So we want to thank you. For those of you, I want to ask you to indulge me a few seconds here because I want to provide a little backstory on Juneteenth for those that may not know. Juneteenth is the oldest-known celebration in the state of Texas. It signifies the Emancipation Proclamation as it relates to the state of Texas in 1865. This year marks the 150th anniversary of Juneteenth, which was June 19th when Gordon Granger, Major General Gordon Granger landed on the island of Galveston and started to make his way through the state of Texas to announce and to set forth the Emancipation Proclamation that was signed by our president in January of 1862, in effect for January 1st, 1863, thusly 1865, when he landed in Texas to enforce that proclamation. So we in the Missouri City Juneteenth, again, as mayor, dedicated the existence and what we do toward providing cultural relevance every year within this community. We've been very fortunate in which to do this and we thank them and you, the people of the community, for supporting us each and every year in doing so. So with that having said, want to announce an exciting week-long activity calendar for the Missouri City 2015 Celebration. We, for many of those that see our events posted, we have a VIP reception that we set forth on Thursday, June 11th, and that's at the Freedom Tree. Again, a little backstory on the Freedom Tree, that was one of the alleged positions where Colonel Granger read or reinforced the reading of the Emancipation Proclamation. And we initially started many of our executed events and activities over at the Freedom Tree, which is inside of Lake Olympia on Freedom Tree Drive or more commonly Misty Hollow, which is the better accessible lane over there. It's a beautiful reception that we'll have underneath that tree on Thursday and, you know, again, we love the support that we get, so, you know, we invite many people to come out and share in that. We will follow that up on Monday, which is June 15th, where we have a fundraising golf tournament. And I say fundraising for a reason. One of the core ingredients, one of the principal vision and mission statements of this foundation is that we provide financial support to the needy students in the Fort Bend County, more importantly, within the city of Missouri City, that they continue with education because we know in today's world, you can't advance without being educated. And we want to provide those that may be a little less fortunate or challenged that opportunity to continue on with their education. And we've been very fortunate to, I would say, over the last 10 years, award over $100,000 in scholarships and we do that through the golf tournament, our gala, things that we ask, you know, you to support us with paying some funds because most of what we do is absolutely free and it's open to the general public. So we encourage that, but we also ask for your support. So the golf tournament on Monday, Quell Valley Country Club, will start at 7:00 AM with registration and an 8:00 AM shotgun start. So again, come out and support. If you can't get off work, tell a friend that might be home on vacation to come out and support us because we really do need that. The kids in the Fort Bend County, more importantly, Missouri City, need that. So we need your support there. We've transitioned to Thursday of that week, which is Thursday, the 18th of June, where, again, it's a gala, which is a fundraiser for us, and we ask, again, your support to come out. The gala was something that we put in place to warmly recognize the unbelievable talent, the work that the citizens of Missouri City put in within this community. And we have recognized so, so many of you and we want to continue to recognize those people and we'd like you to come out and help us recognize those people and show some support for the foundation with your attendance there. On Friday, we have a new installation. We are going to do an art exhibition. It's entitled, it takes a village art project and we have an unbelievably talented, she calls herself a fabric artist, but she does quilts in 3D and I don't think-- Mayor Pro Tem, you can-- I don't think that words, mere words can illustrate what you'll see if you come by here to see this. And this is going to take place right here at the Civic Center and it's absolutely free. It's going to be a wine and cheese type of deal. And we have 15 other talented artists from both Houston and Missouri City that are going to be out supporting her and this project with their unbelievable artwork. So you'll see everything from quilts to graphic and other paints and illustrations. So again, please come out and support that and these talented artists. It's absolutely free and it will start at 6:00 PM and go till about 9:00, 9:30. Now for some of those others, we will have our movie in the park and that'll start at dusk, so you actually have an opportunity to still go to the art show and then come over to Hunter's Glen Park where we'll have a movie in the park set up. And this year, we will be showcasing Selma. We thought that that was something that would be appropriate, being that this is the 150th anniversary for the Emancipation for Texas. Saturday, that's June 20th, that's our big day. We've added two also new installations for Saturday, one being Bidwist Tournament, which is a card game, and the other being a domino tournament. And, you know, we thought that these, we thought that these community action events like this will help bring members of the community out and cause the interaction and the social connections that we're seeking when we founded this foundation. Now there is an entry fee for that because there is a grand prize being awarded, but again, all of the earned income or revenue goes towards our scholarships. So we really do encourage you to come on out and share the information if you don't actually participate or come out and just encourage a friend that might participate, but please come out and enjoy that. Now, in the evening, we will start with our big One Mile is Smiles Juneteenth Parade. And I want to, I want to kind of talk about the parade a little bit because this year and throughout our whole week, you'll see a slight infusion of Mardi Gras. So this year, we're going to have some special entries in our parade and we expect to have a second-line band closing out that parade where we'll look to replicate the Mardi Gras with people in the street with their, I don't know if you call them umbrellas or parasols or whatever you call them, but we're really looking for the community to come out and support that parade as we march right down Texas Parkway. We take it right to Thurgood Marshall High School where we'll have a big battle of the band. And so, you know, that's always been an unbelievable outlet for us and, you know, again, it's absolutely free, so please tell and share that information with any and all because all that we do is culturally relevant and I think that everyone that come out, they'll enjoy all that we do. Now there is one new installation that we were able to confirm today and that is the services. We're going to have some special church services at the historic St. John Missionary Baptist Church on Oilfield Drive. That will occur on Sunday, June 21st. We don't have all of the details yet for the service, but there will be a service, a Juneteenth special service at that historic church. For those who don't know, the church was founded in 1892, was it? 92?
1692.
Yeah, 1892, the church was founded and it was one of the first movements or establishments for those that were in Freedom Town. That was one of the first places of worship that was established there. So the church has great historical history and we're very pleased to be able to announce that we'll be performing or having a special Juneteenth service over there. That's it on our events and activities. Again, we thank you all for your support over these 13 years of actual operation, 13 years of execution, but this is our 14th year of operation and we really, really do appreciate that support that you provide. Mayor, have I missed anything?
Only one thing I'd like to add is that we do give scholarships to the kids. Right now, we're, I think we're at 20,000--
And generated funds.
Just generated funds for the kids and we're really proud of that. We not only give scholarships to those kids, but we stay with them throughout their college career. We have at least about four or five kids that we started with. One, the latest graduate is Ashley Sherman. She's Miss Prairie View, a five-year engineering student with well over four-point GPAs in college. So all of you engineers know that in order to maintain a five-point, a four-point average, that's pretty, not only that, she speaks Japanese--
Yeah.
And then remarkable person, but that's all of those, all of the students that we support. We're really proud of our scholarship program and we plan to grow it continuously throughout the years. Derek Woods is the executive director and I really appreciate Derek. He's the one who put this, all of this together and do all of the grunt work. So very much appreciative of what you've done over the years. So thank you, Mayor.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I did not have anyone sign up for public comments. Item five are staff reports. There are no staff reports, are there? Item six is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as written? Councilman Emery made the motion. Councilman Wyatt made the second. All those in favor, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rules and go to Agent Nine C on authorization. This will allow the person with State Farm who's doing the, to maybe get out of here.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there a second? Second. Mayor Pro Tem, are we here? And let me just make a comment here. Yeah, come on up. Bill, I know Bill, I contacted Bill the other day because I had received a call from the attorney for State Farm and they were setting up a claims office or claims facility, drive-through claim facility in the Lowe's parking lot to handle, at that time, over 4,000 claims and it was growing every day. And they needed a special use permit to do that. And fire marshals went over and inspected it and I asked Bill to help get this through. And it points out something, Bill, that I think, and I know that Councilman Wyatt and I talked about this, I think this is something, I don't know how we need to do it, but I think we need to pass an ordinance or something that allows Judy, as one of her duties as our EOC person, to issue those permits for emergency-type situations like this. Because it'll come up again and I don't want us to have to have to make a special provision and then come to council for approval. So, you know, E Joyce, if we can come up with some kind of a resolution that puts something else on Judy's back, but that's okay. That's okay. She's there. I was with her anyway. I would have issued it myself, but anyway. So that we don't have to go through this because this is a service that they're doing for the community and I would hate that it got delayed and I kept driving through the facility to check to make sure that they got their permits and everything so that they could proceed. But anyway, so we're here tonight to at least consider authorizing and issue that permit that has already been issued as an afterthought to allow the assessment for flood victims and car victims. So anyway, so that's your motion, Councilman Wyatt?
That's my motion.
And is there a second?
I hope that when we look at whatever we need to do to make this a provision, that we also look at any fees that may be associated. We may want to not charge any true emergencies. We may want to waive, so we need to look at all of that.
Yeah. Any other comments or, I hated that you all had to come, but, you know, that you're a servant.
It's been entertaining.
Has it-- The meeting's been entertaining or has been entertaining getting the permit?
No, 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 not at all.
Well, I hated that the lawyers had to call me to get this prompted, but I didn't know about it and I'm glad that we could accommodate it because it is a service that we needed and--
We appreciate it.
Jennifer, thank you for--
About 4,000 cars.
Getting the process and fire marshal getting it inspected, so, good. Any other comments, concerns? Motion by Councilman Wyatt, second by Councilman Emery. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
That's your lead.
Thank you.
Don't leave.
Yeah, you can stay. This is called damage mitigation too.[1322.23][1322.23](laughter) All right, item seven are public hearings, 7A.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of 1.32 acres of land from LC 3 Retail District to R2 Single Family Residential District, describing said 1.32 acre tract of land, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating thereto.
And this is the first of two readings. And Jennifer, if I understand it, all they're really doing is giving up some of the detention area that they had originally provided for and are going to convert that to residential lots. Is that right?
That is correct.
And I also know they have two other contracts pending on the corners there at Oilfield and Highway 6.
That's correct as well.
But for explanation to council, that's all they're really doing is they, if you all remember years ago, we zoned that as commercial and we set aside a fairly good-sized detention area. They now have determined that there is a better market for the residential side, which is great for us, and are not going to need as much attention. So that's what this item is.
That's correct.
Did I explain it okay, Jennifer?
You did great. That was exactly it.
Well, I know.
Well, the aerial identifies that location and so we do have a final plat that's been conditionally approved by P&amp;Z for the portion that was zoned, rezoned to residential a few years ago. This portion would be added into what was previously plotted.
And we've got LJ here, we've got everybody here. They, you know, made this trip just to attend this meeting, I think. You're right, James.
And I will say, this would be part of the Riverstone community. So the subdivision that was plotted, this additional acreage would be part of the Riverstone community.
Y'all have any questions?
Jennifer, any feedback from Colony Lakes HOA?
We received no opposition, no letters either way.
They were really more opposed to the commercial and the original state than they were residential. They wanted residential, so they should be happy with this.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt.
Okay, Councilman Wyatt made the motion. Councilman Marulis made the second. Any other discussion? Not, we'll vote all those in favor. Thank you. James, thank you all for coming. We had a whole, they got the whole crew back here and they didn't even get to even stand up.[1500.33][1500.33](laughter) All right, item 7A2.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, granting a specific use permit, authorizing the use of a 34.16 acre tract of land in the city of Missouri City, Texas, as a specific use, temporary construction equipment yard, providing limitations, restrictions, and conditions on such specific use, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
This is a first reading for this ordinance and this is an area that I'm not sure if many people know that it even exists over there because it is very well screened from public view, from the public roadways. But this has been an area that's been in continuous use by many of the home builders that are building the lots out in the Sienna community, many of the engineering firms and other contractors. This is an area where, a central location where they can locate their construction offices in any materials, not directly related to the construction, that all goes on site, but some of the smaller materials that they may need extra room to house. This location is off of McKeever Road. So far, there's a small portion. There's previous specific use permits that covered the whole area that's outlined in black on the aerial in front of you. They've utilized a small portion of that, but they're seeking an SUP to continue the use of this area. As council is aware, as the public is probably aware, Sienna South is under construction and they are moving at a rapid speed to continue to build single-family lots. So this area is still needed, right at our city limits, to locate, centrally locate, and house those construction trailers. Staff did submit to P&amp;Z a positive recommendation, pretty much following the rules and regulations that were tied to the preceding SUP ordinance for the site that accounted for screening, maintaining that vegetative hedge that, or vegetation that you see around the site now. These are some of the pictures that we included in the council packet that pretty much shows what you would see looking at it from either Sienna Parkway or Wyatt's plantation. And so the ordinance that's in front of you reflects maintaining that type of screening, providing for areas if that screening were to be diminished. Planning and zoning commission does forward a positive recommendation on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt. This area has worked well all these years and all we basically doing is continuing.
Well, and I think that's the key, that this isn't something new. This is something that's been there. So it's not like something's just going to show up on the back door of Silver Ridge or something like that. It's always, it's been there, so it's just a, I guess, kind of a formality or--
Continuation.
Making sure that we continue and add the right permits available to them, so.
So that's your second?
Yes.
There's been a motion by Councilman Wyatt, a second by Councilman Emery. Any discussion, questions? Not, we'll vote all those in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
7B, public hearings and related actions, 7B1.
An order of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, finding and declaring the building and structures located at 1819 Creighton Drive in the city of Missouri City, Texas, to be public nuisances and ordering the repair or alternatively the demolition and removal of the building and structures and providing for severability.
And this is a one-time reading?
Yes, it is.
Do you want to show the pictures?
Little background, owners, Mr. Nash, who apparently lives in Fairfax, Virginia, best that we have been able to determine, lender holder, I think that's Deutsche Bank National Trust Company. Also, we have lends held by the Estates Community Association, failure to pay maintenance fees. We're requesting a substandard determination. There was strangely in the report that Deutsche National Bank has been granted a home equity foreclosure order on December 29th, 2006, but the records don't show that they've taken the property. They have the order, but they haven't executed on it.
They may not want it.
It could be that. And the Estates also has filed two lends for delinquent maintenance fees and one notice of noncompliance with restrictive covenants. On April 21st, Kirk Allen, our deputy building official, Mr. Allen, is standing beside me in the event you have not had the pleasure of-- not had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Allen, but is a long-term employee. I suspect most of you know him. And I will take this moment to digress and tell you that on Friday, our chief building official will be separating from service with us. He's been offered a position with another city that he has determined it's just too attractive not to take. And I'm asking Mr. Allen to step up at that time as interim building official while we make future plans. But Mr. Allen, along with Ron Reitzel, executed a search warrant on the property to determine the condition of the premises. Hopefully, you can see a few of these. The first one is the notice of the search warrant that was posted on the door. And then you can see inside the garage. One thing you'll notice later, the garage has a second floor above it. I want to point that out because I think you will find that important. As you notice, the ceiling has fallen to the ground. Another view of the garage, another part of the house. And if you have questions, Kirk can give you a better description of what you're seeing. But ceiling collapse, more ceiling collapse.
Wow.
That is floor where the baseboard is gone and the mold and mildew is scattering across the carpet. I don't know that you can get a real good view in the second picture there, but that is the underside of the roof decking that is black with mold, mildew, and rot. And the rafters and timbers that are supporting the roof are beginning to deteriorate from the water that's flowing in. When Mr. Allen went in to run the search warrant, he took his flashlight with him, but he soon discovered he did not need it. It was a sunny day.
[laughing]
Plenty of holes in the roof. You can see more of the deterioration in the roof area in that picture. Some outside, the picture of the bathroom just really captured my attention and not for good reasons. I have no idea what all is falling through the ceiling there, but it's in bad shape. The outside picture, you can see where the fascia board and soffit are failing. Then, as I noted, the garage has a second floor above it. But there at the front, you can see also where the roof has failed on the garage. The next picture is photographs of the bees that are making honey there in the building.
That's probably.
No gas meter, electricity is disconnected, more holes in the eaves showing in those two pictures. So the building is open for any, as I inadvertently said, in an email and somebody included it in it, any varmint can get in there.
So where are we with this, Gary?
Where are we? With plenty of holes in the roof. What we're asking, you got to my conclusion, what we're asking is we want council to determine this to be a substandard structure. Give the owner, and I'll ask Ms. Yamu to read along and make sure I say this right, give the owner 10 days to start work. And if he wants to try to rebuild it, he needs to pull the permits and get busy because we want to give him 30 days to do it. If not, tear it down within 30 days. If the owner does not do it, and I have no reason, since we have not heard from him, no reason to believe that he will, to give the lien holders 40 days to begin demolition. And they have a total of 60 days to tear it down. If they have not done it within 60 days, give the city the authority to go in there and remove that structure.
Gary, 2006, you say? Has it been in this condition? I just want to just kind of rehash this. How long has this been in this condition?
I don't know. The homeowners association reported it to us earlier this year, if my memory serves correctly. And we began to look at it. And unfortunately, on our first pass by, we didn't see that giant hole in the roof. When we looked at it a little more closely, we saw the problems, pulled the search warrants. And so we've been aware of it for less.
For about a year.
We've been aware of it for several months. And so we've been moving forward on it.
Okay.
The condition, also note that the garage door was not secured when Kirk went over there. So anybody could have gone in that house. In the pictures, I didn't see evidence of anybody doing vandalism in the house, but I don't know that they need to do vandalism. Mother Nature's doing a good job of it.
Gary, have you been writing any code violations on this property prior to you finding out?
I believe so.
Yeah, for several years, code had.
And no response?
No response.
Okay.
Sighted to court and they didn't show.
He's in Virginia. He doesn't have to show up.
Okay, but what is it? Is it the roof and what else is specifically making this? I mean, they don't have to fix the inside. So make sure we, well, we're going to be voting on what makes this a substandard structure?
I'm going to let my building official respond.
Because I mean, it could be as junk and ugly on the inside as possible if it's, but if it's protected from the outside elements, I think, isn't that the key? If it's not protected from the elements?
It's a health and safety issue.
Okay.
Is, are there conditions with the structure that make it a risk? First, is it secured from unauthorized entry? Our view is that it is not secured from unauthorized entry. If it is, it's only by our actions that it's secured from unauthorized entry. Certainly no effort to keep people out. Yes, the doors are locked. Yes, the windows are closed, but those are easily breached. And the garage door was left open.
They're not anymore breachable if somebody lived in the house.
Somebody lives in the house.
We can't use.
But the garage door had been left unopened so that it was accessible by minors, by children, and by anybody that wanted to go in there.
But if you closed the garage door, would it be separated from the elements?
It would not be because you have the eaves that are bad, the soffits that are bad, which allow disease-carrying animals to enter, rats, rodents, snakes, and because the roof is not protected against the weather and the rot that has occurred and the mold and mildew that's building within the house. I believe those are the conditions that...
Yeah, they are. The condition of the roof right now, in maybe six months, the whole roof, yeah, the roof structure could cave in, especially if it keeps raining like it has.
Yeah, well, all I'm asking is, let's say they can go out and they fix the roof. And they don't do anything to the inside of the house. Does that change anything?
If you get rid of the bees and the holes and soffits.
But that doesn't make the house substandard. I mean, we're getting ready to vote on something that's a lot more serious than what we may think it is. And I want to be very specific in cask in my vote.
You ready to answer that?
Yes, I'm actually looking up the, at least in terms of the rodents. I do think that we have a provision that provides that when a structure actually houses those types of animals and rodents, that it is substandard. But I'm looking for the specific provision for you. Actually, what we have, we have a list of six things, a building or other structure shall be deemed dilapidated, substandard, or unfit for human habitation and a hazard to public health, safety, and welfare if the building or structure contains any one of the following conditions, and we have six, which includes any building or structure that has become deteriorated, damaged through the exposure to the elements, including without limitation, flood, wind, hail, or rain, any building or other structure that is so structurally deteriorated or damaged that it is in danger of collapse, any building or other structure used for the occupancy of one or more persons, we actually don't have the situation here, which is not connected to an approved public wastewater disposal system. We don't have that because the house is unoccupied. Any building, oh, here it is, any building or other structure so constructed or maintained as to bring about conditions hazardous to public health, safety, and welfare, including conditions conducive to harboring of rats, snakes, mice, or other disease-carrying animals or insects reasonably calculated to spread disease. And there are other items as well.
I just want to make sure that when you get ready to tell somebody they're going to tear something down, we better be very, very, very...
It is fixable, but we don't know, and we haven't estimated, the cost of the repairs. It's not just putting new roof decking on it. I suspect there are structural members that will be required to be replaced. And then, excuse me, the remediation of the mold and the mildew on the inside would also be necessary to reduce the risk to health and safety, as well as just sealing the envelope of the structure.
And I'm just making sure that, you know, we're being very specific about what are we saying is substandard, you know, because I don't want the guy to go out there and fix it, fix the roof and close up a few little holes and, you know, and the rest of it is left.
I would imagine that Deutsche Bank knows what it would cost to fix it and is less owed on it than what it would cost to fix it. They're walking away from it. They don't want the liability. I've done it enough, I know. When it costs more to fix one than what's owed on it, you walk away from it. Might put more money in it. Taxes are delinquent, I'm assuming. Right?
I actually don't know the answer to that question. Tricia's telling me that they're not.
Huh?
Tricia's telling me that they've been paid.
I wouldn't think they would be. Probably delinquent for a number of years.
I was trying to think back of what I had seen in the title report, and I don't really remember delinquent taxes jumping out at me. But it's hard to believe he's paying the taxes.
Tricia's shaking her head no, which means someone has paid the taxes on the property.
Really?
So have we, have we actually evaluated the mold to determine if it's of such that it would require that this?
We have not had anybody come in and do a professional evaluation of the mold.
Okay. Do we have a certain set of procedures that we have to comply with before we bring a condemnation to council?
Yes, sir.
We do. And they're set forth in Article 11 of Chapter 14 of our Code of Ordnances. And so they provide for certain, I apologize for interrupting, but they provide for certain notice, notices sent to the owner and lien holders.
And that's what we're doing.
And publication as well.
That's what we're doing with this.
So basically, you would say the damage has been created by master?
Yes.
So we don't have to say mold?
That's right.
Because I wouldn't want to be that specific. It's the same thing, but it's really technical in terms of somebody suing.
Any other discussion on this issue? If not, as I said, this is the first and final reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Close the public hearing, I guess, and to...
Who's district?
I guess we're closing the public hearing and we're declaring the building and the structures as substandard, right?
Yes. And if I may clarify one thing Gary said, there's not a commencement time period set forth in the order. It just allows the owner 30 days to complete the repair or demolition of the property. So they don't have to begin within any specific time period. The lien holder does, however, have to begin within 40 days.
Sure. This in A or B? What subdivision?
A, Creighton, yeah. It's so wrongful in the...
You don't make a motion?
Someone did.
No, I don't have a motion.
That was to close the public hearing.
Oh, okay. So moved.
Is there a second? All right, second by Councilman White. Okay. And a motion and second. All those in favor? Motion carries. All right, item nine, there are appointments. There are none. I mean, eight are no appointments. Item nine, and I would author, I would like a motion to suspend the rules and take 9A and 11A.
Who's already been suspended?
Well, I guess it has, hasn't it? So earlier on. So we want to take 11, we want to take 9A to considerize authoring the city membership to the Lower Brazos River Coalition. And then we want to take 11A to consider resolution supporting and endorsing the creation of the Lower Brazos River Coalition. So we're going to, we're going to vote to be a member before we create it.
Yes, sir. We could flip it, but we can do 11A and 9A and do it.
Yeah, why don't we take 11?
We can do 11A first.
Let's take 11A first and let's create it. So is there a motion?
So, thought they were going to get us some more water?
Hey, all this rain has really helped council, mayor and council.
All right. Tell them what it is.
Okay. What we have before is that, as we're aware, the Brazos River is the largest river basin in Texas, stretching all the way up from the New Mexico Panhandle area, area all the way down to the Gulf of Mexico. It is a lifeblood for all of us, for ranchers, farmers, and even for us as municipal customers through the Gulf Coast Water Authority. And what the coalition is set to do is to ensure that these limited resources that we have are developed and managed for the benefit of all, both in the upper portion and the lower portion. But we talk about the lower portion or the lower Brazos is from Possum Kingdom Lake down. That was the area that was set up by TCEQ or Texas Environmental, I'm sorry, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, to have a water master. And that's to help regulate and to make sure that the senior water right and junior water right holders are able to get their water in times of need and when they make those calls. But we're here to be, this coalition is to be a voice of us downstream takers of water, of users of water. I can't say takers, but users of water. And so our goals, the goals that have been presented forth by the committee and the coalition is to keep water flowing down the entire length of the Brazos River, work together to share these limited resources, examine policies that may be placed on primacy of water upstream in reservoirs. Some of them gone through in the current legislature process. I do not have a status on it, but I don't think they made it out of committees, is, for example, on the recreational side, is that they want to keep the lakes full for recreational and beneficial use. Even those lakes are set up for storage for water right holders further downstream. And so that would really put an impediment on getting that water down if the reservoirs were set up as recreational entities versus actual storage uses. So this coalition is there to put that voice forward, to help us out, and to be a voice for us as a group to the legislature body.
And if I may read the caption of the resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, supporting and endorsing the creation of the Lower Brazos River Coalition.
Does it have any hierarchy? Is there elected offices?
Yes, there is.
And the distribution of power of some sort according to the...
We have, we have a hierarchy. This is the first, first time this is being put together. And currently, right now, the chair, there's a chair, a vice chair, a secretary, and a treasurer. Those are currently filled right now by Judge Sylvester of Brazoria County. Ivan Langford, he's the general manager of Gulf Coast Water Authority. They are a water provider. So they're a good advocacy for us as well. Gene Fischler with NRG Energy. And Gary Bassinger, he's the Economic Development Alliance for Brazoria County as well right now. And this is the first group that has taken the lead to start this coalition. There is another one similar to this in the Colorado River Basin, and this is mirrored to that so we can have a voice.
And so what does it, what is, what does this cost?
The cost on the, after the resolution in Section 9A, it's a membership of $500 for a city.
And that's all?
That's all, sir.
Okay.
And in the event that we have to come together for calls of some sort, we feel comfortable that everybody's in a car and...
Yes, sir.
If your city has certain pain, they will feel it as well as we do.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We believe that this is in the act of best interest for us as a group as a whole for the lower basin. And we've had discussions. Gulf Coast Water was one that set up and started the process for a water master through the TCEQ process that they didn't get legislatively. And we start seeing that as a benefit that is starting to be enacted this year, this fiscal year with TCEQ and the state. And they're going through all the permit holders right now of water rights so that we make sure we appropriately are delegated and we don't have people taking water that doesn't, that isn't adjudicated to them or overtaking.
Any other questions? Not we'll vote on 11A. Motion was by Councilman Emery, second by Councilman White. All those in favor? in favor? Motion carries. Then we will do 9A, is to consider authorizing the membership at $500 in the Lower Brazos River Coalition. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilman Emery made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Chris?
Chris.
Chris spending money, is it? Spending money, man.
Councilman Preston made the second, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Item 9B is consider authorizing the parkland dedication proposal for the Gideon Ranch Residential Subdivision.
Gideon Ranch Residential Subdivision is about a 40-acre tract that is going to be for a single home. The developer, property owner, has proposed the payment of the fee in lieu of dedicating parkland, $14,000 because there's one home going there. The Parks Board has recommended approval, Planning and Zoning has recommended approval. It's in Park Zone 12.
How many acres? 40 acres?
About 40 acres.
41 six.
It's, uh, just west of the, I'm sorry, just east of the Durham tract. It's within that curve of Oyster Creek that's been extended. It's, uh, south of Silver Ridge and north of, I've lost it. Lawrence, what's it north of?
Night Road goes through the middle of the track.
Night Road is gonna be the western, western boundary.
Is it appropriate for you to determine, kind of give us some insight as to how they will be used? Lawrence?
He might be able to do that as the engineer for the developer.
The other hat.
The other hat.
The landowner of the track, basically, he's got, you got actually on, it's about, oh, probably 90 acres, thereabouts. He owns 40 acres that's on the east side of the future extension of Night Road. You had come before you the Durham tract, which is on the west half of Night Road. And so what happens is anytime you create a new residential lot, there's a parkland dedication. And so the good thing about this, this particular development is both of these landowners had to dedicate the future right of way for Night Road. So that's, that's, that's one positive thing about this, this project coming to light right here. I always say it's plat mail, but you know, when you get ready to develop, you're gonna have to take care of the city with those dedications. The, and it makes sense from the standpoint of the landowners, when you only have one resident that's gonna actually be developed, it's, it's more sense, it makes more sense to do the money in lieu of, because of course, obviously, with a 41-acre tract and a single home and the amount of land that would be required to be dedicated for parkland, we don't take that.
He can have his own call.
There you go. And typically, we want, as, as a Parks Board, you want tracts that are larger, you'd like to have at least five acres because it's a maintenance issue as well. So hopefully that addresses your questions. And I'll address any other questions or comments anyone may have with regards to the project.
Scott, are we, is Night Road coming?
Night Road's not in the current upcoming CIP for the upcoming fiscal year because we already have leverage projects scheduled that if we would lose the leverage, 80% funding from the state, we're hoping to advance it. There have been some initial discussions with the county on that. It's 50/50, 50% on their bond package, 50% on ours, but we have not reached any kind of agreement on timeframe for Night Road. It's my professional opinion that it is one, should be one of the higher projects in our bond package because of the projected relief to Sienna Parkway. It's projected to move about 8,000 vehicles off of Sienna Parkway, which is operating over capacity right now.
Have you had a current conversation with the county?
I've had a conversation with one elected official with the county. He indicated that it was not a priority for the county on that project, and we're hoping to...
That was some time back, maybe?
That was, yes, sir, about two, three months ago on that. I have not had one in the recent.
What leverage do we have or anything that we can keep this up as a high priority since it is going to, you know, reduce the, the traffic off of Sienna Parkway?
Sure. The big thing that we gotta remember is either the city has to come up with our 50% match, which would be probably in the neighborhood of about a million, a million and a half dollars, or we would have to convince the county to pay 100% with a reimbursement from the city on that. Right now, I would not see us having that ability until the next fiscal year, which would be fiscal year 17, right?
Bill?
Yeah, 17 on that.
Excuse me, but the item before us is parkland dedication. And so...
You forgive me for that, but...
Well, I mean, I, I, you know, you ask one person and she...
She's fixing to jump in here.
I move that we accept the money in lieu of on the parkland dedication.
But every chance I get, I got to mention Night Road, so pardon me for that.
Councilman White made the motions. Are there a second?
Second.
Mr. Farmer, Parks Board.
Yeah, we need that Lawrence parkland.
Councilman Ruhl has made the second, all those in favor? Very good. All right. Item 10, ordinances, 10A.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 42 floodplain management of the Missouri City Code, removing regulations providing for the construction of certain enclosed areas, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability.
And this is first of two readings.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Okay. This started back in February when we were being audited by the ISO CRS representatives, and they're reviewing our codes. And looking at between Section 4215 and Section 4252, there was some confusion, and this is being clarified with this ordinance. And basically, in Section 4215, we talked about prohibiting of any enclosures below the floodplain. And that's insurance. And they really liked that provision, and we're looking forward to having that help us out with our rating and developing points with that. But then there's some confusion and some clarification that needed when we started saying, well, you could maybe put a enclosure in an area that could be subject to flooding. So we went back and forth, we worked with the legal department, realized that for clarity's sake and clarification to make it ease is that to remove that section or new or substantially improved buildings is that we should have no enclosures below the floodplain or those areas subject to flooding, because if that's the case, you're gonna be above the floodplain anyway. So this would provide that clarity that we need to have and will help us out with ISO, our CRS rating.
Okay. Very good. And this is also first of two readings. So is there a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Councilman Preston made the second, all those in favor? Motion carries. 10B.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, establishing temporary maximum speed limits for certain school zones located, located within the city for summer school, including designating locations, dates, and times, providing a penalty, providing for repeal, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency.
Evening again, Mayor and Council. We're back. School's out, but school's going back in session again.
My question is, why have, why do we have to do this every year? Why can't we put this in the speed limit ordinances that covers summer school and regular school?
They move.
They move. The issue is that they move schools around.
Different schools.
Yes.
From last year.
Oh, okay.
And so the schools change for summer school every year, and so therefore we, it's a moving target.
So it's by the school name, not by just school?
It's the actual zone at the school.
It's the actual zone in the school that you'll see.
But when we go by land and lane, we'll be able to go the residential speed limit.
I know.
But they pass these schools, they gotta go by...
It just blows me away that we have to bring this up every year, that it's not some way of building it, that wherever that location is.
Yeah.
Huh?
Sometimes it changes the plan.
Oh, really?
It's a moving target, sir, Mayor and Council. And so it makes it very difficult. We would love to be able to have that type of simplicity. We wouldn't have to be up here.
All right. And then that means we've got to adjust the lights.
We're good.
For the same thing. All right. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt.
Was that Chris?
Yes, sir. Do we, is there a cost involved with changing the lights?
No. No, our staff, our staff takes care of that. It's just labor.
Labor, labor intensive. Yeah, it's just labor intensive, all those.
Our signal technicians take care of that. Yes, sir.
Do they reimburse us, the school?
No.
Yeah. You're dreaming. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, we're on 11B. Consider resolution approving the submission of the Body, Worn, Camera, Pilot Implementation Program Grant Application to the United States Department of Justice and containing other provisions related thereto.
I move to adopt.
Second.
You know, when we were in...
Fast enough for you?
When the chief and I were in, in Washington DC, and we were visiting, at least with, I was, with Culverson, he's not in favor of anything that he would write a letter of support for services. He said, "I am in favor of writing support for buying things that you own." In other words, he's not a big supporter of things like the COPS grant, because as he says, at some point in time, you have to absorb those. He says, "I'll support you in any way you want to look at things, like body cameras, vests and things." So that's what's kind of prompted this. We're gonna, we're gonna send that directly to him and ask for his support and see if we can get some of the money. Anything is better than nothing. And as I said, it's, it's well worth our while to at least submit the grant. If we get turned down, so be it, but we're gonna, we're gonna get it. And since he's on appropriations, I think we got some point of a chance, hopefully, chief, so. Very good. Thank you, sir. There was a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Being that the, being that the legislature now dictated that we gotta have them, so. All right, 11C is consider resolution approving the submission of the community oriented policing services hiring program. This is the COPS grant, application to the Department of Justice and containing other provisions related thereto. Again, when the chief and I were there talking to them, this is all dictated on what they get as far as budgeting and, but we gotta put our name in the hat and the reason, it's what we were there for, so. That's what this is, that's what it's there for. And in this particular case, we will have the support of Olson, Green, Cruz, and everybody except Culverson when we, when we do this. So that was your motion? Councilman Smith made the motions. There a second?
Second.
Councilman Emery made the second, all those in favor? Motion carries.
I just like the fact we're trying to get some of our money back.
I know. Well, and like I told you before, you know, we found out that, and chief, I know that when we started looking at this under that GAIN program for our mentoring, I really want us to figure out with, with them, Maurice and them, when we can get that grant into because of the, our First Tee program, the, the choose to follow the rules, all of those, the basketball thing, I think, gives us a great opportunity to get some of that money that we were not really familiar with, so. All right, Judy, you and the chief wanna come up and just kind of tell everybody? And let me just say, guys, I was there. We have a tremendous team on our emergency operations. Everybody was there. The chief was calling me at 1:30 Tuesday morning, and at 2:30, and at 3:30, and 4:00. I finally just got up, chief, as I tell, but I can't go to sleep. But anyway, I was there with these guys. We have a great team. Judy has organized everybody, all the department heads knew exactly what they were supposed to do. She had her STIT meetings, and, and we were on top of everything that was going on. We were communicating with the county, with the state, and everybody else. And it is, I just want to congratulate you that you did a tremendous job, and it was not something that the general public gets to see what happens in the EOC. I was there. But again, guys, be very proud of our, our team. They were awesome.
Yes, sir. And I will say that acclimates to Judy too because of just the planning evolved last week. It's just, there was a lot of things that go on behind the scenes just for the planning that pretty much puts everything else on hold for those planning purposes. But what I like to do is I like to cover the actual Memorial Day night into Tuesday morning, early Tuesday morning, and I'll let Judy talk about the preparations that went on for this past weekend. Memorial Day was a great day. It was nice and sunny. It was warm. And we knew that there was rain moving towards the Houston area. However, no one knew that it was gonna stall over the top of us, and that's exactly what happened. Actually, what happened, there were some storms that actually met just to the north of us and stalled, according to weather people. And so it actually dumped some 12 inches of rain up in the Sugar Land area. That did not stop it from dumping rain on top of Missouri City. So once again, it did stall over the top of us. We, in the fire department, received a page at 12:55 AM that they had reports of people trapped in their vehicles in high water, and they were affecting rescues at that time. There were numerous calls for service for the police department and fire department all at once. Sergeant Ambar and Acting Battalion Chief Jonathan Sabrisula actually talked and decided they were gonna meet in dispatch center and coordinate the efforts of response from that standpoint in the dispatch center. I did respond into the dispatch center. Lieutenant Sabrisula, who was riding in as the battalion chief that night, actually called me and said, "Don't come through Hampton and Highway 1092 as you normally would. You need to find another way here because we have a report of high water there." There was a lot of reports of high waters in intersections that we never knew had problems before or never experienced problems there before. So after actually making my way and working my way into the dispatch center, I met with those two, and we put a little bit of plan of action together with them. I've got a situational update from them. I called Judy, I called the mayor, and the problem that we had is that everybody across the Houston region was stuck at home. So we were watching the system. We did, I did contact Sharon of Public Works, and they were able to find one person in Public Works who made his way into work and removed some trees and tried to set barricades as best that he could by himself. Information, we did contact the communications department, and they had some difficulties with the, the actual communication devices that we have that delayed the information coming out. For example, the, the company that hosts our city website had some issues that would not allow them to post things. It kept kicking them off. I believe this is correct, Stacy, kept kicking y'all off. And then there were some issues with peer kicking off them off and trying to post information there. Also too, some of the members that, once again, stuck at home, did not have power, didn't have internet to be able to actually post the things across as, as we would hope that they could. So those were, information was posted as, as fast as possible. As I stated, some roadways were closed due to the high water. The resources were limited, even from our mutual aid partners, because they were on calls. Just to give you an example, that during the meeting, during that night, we received a report of a house fire in the Vicksburg subdivision. Sugar Land could not respond to help us. We actually ended up getting Perry Land to come help us, but they were delayed. Staff were able to actually respond. It was both, both ways of getting into that home, the trucks had to drive through high water, which also significantly delayed the response. We did, just as, as a note, from the time period of midnight to 8:00 AM, so midnight Monday to 8:00 AM Tuesday, the fire department responded to 21 calls. The police department responded to 93 calls during that timeframe. That was a significant increase in number of calls that we had in just that short amount of time. We did have a report of one business had a partial roof collapse. We are, we are assuming doomed to, that the water did not drain off the roof fast enough. So that kind of gives you just a, it was a very difficult situation because normally the people that we would rely on to come in were stuck at their house and could not rely to come in. And we did not especially want them coming out in the middle of the darkness and driving through the high water. We were asking citizens to stay off the roadway. That's what we were asking of our, of our employees too, just because of the fact we do not want to put them in danger. And I will turn this over to Judy to talk about the actual preparations that we did for the, this weekend's event with the potential of the Brazos River... for the, this weekend's event with the potential of the Brazos River flooding. So Judy?
Thank you, chief. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Obviously, Tuesday posed a little bit of a challenge. By the time we got here, we got organized, and we realized very quickly that we needed to put a plan in place for, for the Brazos River, the possibility of flooding, and for the weather that it looked like was definitely coming at us. So we actually began the planning process for the weekend events on Wednesday last week. We had those plans finalized by Friday afternoon. Public Works did a great job developing a method to allow us to monitor the local waterways and the channels here through the course of the weekend. They actually began monitoring those routinely at 7 a.m. on Saturday morning, and that monitoring continued every three hours until 3 p.m. on Sunday when it looked like our water levels had stabilized. Public Works fire and police staff were placed on notice of the situation, and everybody, including the critical city staff, was advised of the fact that there was a possibility we could need a full-scale EOC activation. We prepositioned equipment in key locations within the city, and we had great coordination with area agencies, starting on Thursday through Sunday regarding all of the area's efforts, where resources were available. That coordination included routine updates from our levy partners regarding levy operations and that everything was in order there. We did, we did a great job disseminating information through a combination of things, press releases, the Missouri City Ready website, the AM radio station, and MCTV. We were utilizing the dynamic message signs on Highway 6 to make sure that motorists were advised, and we also had some of our mobile message signs out in areas where we needed to make sure motorists were advised about the possibility of high water. Once the storms moved in on Saturday evening, the staff began even more closer monitoring of the situation. Fortunately for us, the storms didn't stall over us the way they had done previously. The streets and the drainage systems handled the amount of rain we got. Really, the area where we had street flooding issues was only down in Sienna, and we did have one signal light down there Saturday night that was flashing, and it flashed until Sunday morning when it was promptly repaired. The waterways did rise in most of the areas and had kind of leveled off and were moving ever so slightly late Saturday and into Sunday. I wanna, I wanna take a moment to especially recognize the public works crews that were out there physically checking those gauges that we had installed, because that was really critical information that helped us monitor the situation and make decisions. Thankfully, the Brazos, excuse me, the Brazos River is cresting or anticipated to crest tonight and then to steadily but very slowly decline over the next three or four days. And right now, there is no rain in the forecast.
And I guess we're in the process now of determining what our claim's gonna be to FEMA. And Scott and I were talking today, one of the things that we've already determined, there's some $52,000 worth of work that needs to be done on the sand traps at the golf course that the water destroyed, so we can get that done, and I guess whatever else we've got out there to make our claim to FEMA for reimbursement.
The other thing, you know, it was a great job for, you know, that you guys have done, and yeah, as the water recedes, you know, one of the questions that I thought was the water underneath our bridges, you know, in, not only in Quail Valley, but in Lake Olympia or wherever, you know, there was high water, any type of inspection to make sure that we haven't lost footings on those bridges, to make sure that, you know, that they're safe for all of our residents.
The engineering staff is already gearing up with a plan to inspect all the bridges, all the crossings, including, for example, the trail crossing under FM 1092 and the trail crossing under Cartwright Road. But they're already making plans that as the water falls, we will be conducting inspections. We will pretty much have to let the water get back to its normal water surface elevation before we can really get in there and get a good look at things, and they don't take us several days to conduct the inspections. The park staff is doing the same on some of our tree resources, because they are valuable resources to the city, and we have lost a number of trees. For example, there's some of the ones on the Edible Arbor Trail that have been underwater for a week or so or more, might have to be replaced, but we would be, we'll be creating a value for all that damage and turning it into Judy for her reporting on that. But yes, we will be doing an inspection for everything. We probably will not have the results till mid or end of next week, depending upon how long it takes the water to recede.
And I remember when we look at the golf course, that we look at those irrigation controls that were underwater too.
Yes, sir.
Because of that circuit board.
Valley Crest's taking care of inspection of all that, and they're putting together an estimate for Tyson. He's working with Kell.
They were underwater, and I know they shored it out.
And then all the traps as well.
Judy, thank you.
Thanks again for a job well done.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
What lessons learned? What are some of the things that we could do better next? Or what kind of tools do we need? What kind of communication tools do we need to get Stacy, you know, pushing more messages or your team?
Sir, we actually have an after-action review scheduled so that we can sit down as a staff, look at those issues, work through the things that we did well, work through the things that we need to improve, and out of that will come a formal report and an improvement plan for the staff. In conclusion, I just wanna say that, you know, although as much as we would like to say that this is over and done and call it a success, there's actually still quite a bit of work done to make sure that we document all of the time and resources we spent and that we put ourselves in the best possible position to be reimbursed for any of that money should federal funds become available.
And it was a live exercise, you know? We practiced it throughout the year, but this was a live exercise that gave us an opportunity to react and do what we needed to do, and I think we did learn some things from the deal. But again, congratulations to Judy and her team. They did a great job. We were fortunate compared to the people, you know, around Livingston and even up north in the Dallas area who are still having flooding in Meyerland again and Houston, so. Very good. Any questions? Very good. Anybody else to report? Bill?
Take a little break before June comes back.
Yeah, we were- Yeah, uh-huh, we are.
I'd like to take a brief moment just to kind of go over a few points that were discussed tonight, just to make sure that the information is getting out there, because if sometime I read things contrary to what really is actually taking place, and I thought that every now and then I can just kind of comment on some of the positive stuff that goes on. Just tonight, we heard that the finance department received some accolades, and they've been doing this for over 27 consecutive years, so I think this is a positive, and this is a kind of a testimony to the citizens of Missouri City that our fiscal, our tax money is in good hands. Another thing that came out was we went through the presentation of the proposed budget, and it seems that we have addressed a pay increase for all the staff, a pay increase for the police department, and we've also developed policy to review compensation on an annual basis. And all of this was done without a tax increase. It's also apparent that that bill, the major businesses are still moving into Missouri City, and small and medium-sized businesses are applying for permits. And you just heard that our emergency units were on the job last week. So those are some resounding positive efforts on the city, and I applaud that, and I hopefully that when the citizens tell you, review and see some of the information that's out there, that this will be a part of it.
Anyone else?
I'll say a couple things, Mayor. So I've been on board sort of two or three weeks, and I've had an opportunity to sit with directors and chiefs for 15, 20-minute rounds. I'm impressed at the leadership that our team has, forward-thinking, hard-working, dedicated employees, and I've seen that in just a short time, and I look forward to working with you guys. I had a great conversation with the communications team. I think we could definitely arm them with some more tools to be even better, but a great staff, and I'm proud to be a part of it.
Very good. All right, you wanna take a break before we reconvene into the special meeting?